Okay, I'll call this regular meeting of the Marshall City Council to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or corrections to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 9th. Any input in council on the minutes as presented?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are vacation of alley and utility easement. One's corp addition will receive the petition for vacation and call for a public hearing. Whose item is this? Anyone's? It's under consent. Wonderful job. All right. Now that we've done that, we're tuned up. Consider the approval of the joint powers agreement for the drug task force. Consider authorization to declare bicycles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. We'll consider approval for Southwest Minnesota Ducks Unlimited to host a bingo fundraiser. Consider approval for a temporary liquor license for the visit Marshall Beer and Wine Festival. Consider a resolution regarding write-in vote counting, uniform election dates, and authorization of election judge appointments. And final item is to consider the approval of bills and project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone wants removed for individual consideration?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. Now for new business, wastewater treatment plant generator Woodward controller replacement. So Jason, do you want to take? Oh, Scott is here. Scott Prisbilla, Assistant Wastewater Superintendent will be taking this item. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As was noted in your council packet, the main plant generator at the wastewater facility was put into service in 2003. The generator provides emergency power in the case of power outages. It is also used by MMU to shed load during peak energy demands, which helps keep electrical rates low in Marshall. Existing Woodward controller, which is part of the generator, is over 21 years old and in need of replacement due to it being obsolete, which was noted by Ziegler Power Systems during routine maintenance and inspection. Because it is obsolete, they are recommending that it be replaced because parts are no longer available. The wastewater CIP does include funds to cover the cost of this replacement, and we are requesting council approval to replace the existing Woodward controller with the EZGEN controller that appears in the quote.
Any questions by council?
Is that a, is that a equal switch for the generator from, I mean, it's a 21-year-old generator, so.
This part will go in there and work well. There's other parts that would be available, but we'd have to replace more hardware, and so the costs would go up.
Okay.
So.
So this is the best deal?
Kind of a like-for-like.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There's another discussion. I entertain a motion. Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? Move to a vote. Close the voting. And passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Highway 23 South Saratoga Street manhole refurbishing. I assume you're going to take that also, Scott?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
So as you may remember, the wastewater department continues to reline our worst sanitary manholes in town to stop H2S corrosion and groundwater infiltration. This year, we will be working on two of these manholes and the systems that we have been utilizing in the past will not work in these due to the structural integrity being compromised in these manholes. They're drop manholes, so there's a lot more corrosion that happens in them. So we have received a quote from HydroClean to install their monoform plus system, which includes a six-inch concrete. They'll put forms in for six inches of concrete, and on the inside of that will be an HDPE liner, which will prevent the corrosion. The monoform plus comes with a five-year workmanship warranty, 70-year structure warranty, and a lifetime HDPE liner warranty. So we feel this is the better option of the two that we had gotten quotes for because it does add the extra strength with that concrete.
Do they spin that in?
Nope, there'll be a form, and then they come in and pour regular cement, fiber reinforced cement around it, so it's a regular concrete pour.
How does a liner, though, they put a, you said an HDPE?
They put the, they put the form down, and then they put the liner on the inside of the form.
Okay.
And then they pour between the existing manhole and that liner.
Okay.
And then the liner is, has some J hooks in it, plastic ones that, that holds secured in place.
Sure, okay.
And they come back and weld all of the HDPE seams, so it's, so it's, doesn't allow water infiltration or gases to get back to that concrete.
Thank you.
So we're requesting council approval to accept the HydroClean bid. We do have $60,000 in the 24 budget to cover these costs.
Council have any additional questions?
I do, because we're spending $16,000 more than the other bid. Are the warranties comparable between the fiberglass and the concrete one?
I am not sure on the warranty on the, on the second bid. I do know that the, we do get added strength with that concrete, the six inches of concrete over the resin, the fiberglass resin, and that was why we chose, chose that system.
I just, I get leery in this time of tight budgets, you know, is spending an extra $16,000 not knowing if the cheaper project or product works just as well? I understand the extra strength, but it's, it's, we got to justify the $16,000. So that's what I asked about. Yes, Jason?
Could I weigh in on that, too?
Sure.
You know, we've talked about this a lot internally with wastewater team and engineering team, and we feel really strongly that this HDPE liner product is a much more robust system. You know, Councilman Schaefer had mentioned the spinning system. This, these manholes are so far deteriorated that other lining methods, you just can't do it. It's, they're way too far gone. This method is really robust by putting that HDPE liner and six inches of concrete on the outside. You're essentially creating a new manhole around that liner. You lose the inside area and some accessibility, but we're not really going in the manholes frequently. It's usually just to get access for cleaning. So these manholes have a lot of infiltration. It's actually pretty alarming, and the structure is so far gone. We really think this is the best solution. The other method is more of like a fiberglass interior. We just don't feel like it's quite as robust. I think the lifetime warranty of the liner and the 70-year warranty of the product kind of speaks for itself, too. If we were to replace this manhole through a traditional method, we costed out the manhole alone at over $11,000, and then when you start to get in and have to dig bypass pump install, significantly more expensive.
Any other questions? So what are the wishes of the council?
I would move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. And close the voting. And that motion passes. Thank you. So next item is the PK 0013 RFB and Trail Extension at County Road 7, proposed plan and design. Jason, this is you, I assume?
Yeah, thank you. So this is a, to give a brief background on this project, this, what we're going to be discussing here with this trail extension and realignment at County Road 7 is one of three parts of the PK 013 project. At this particular location, the trail is being realigned, and I think we've got a drawing there. There it is. The trail is being realigned to take the bike trail, this portion of the Camden Regional Trail off of County Road 7 and to align it straight with the existing trail segments. The trail will run along top of the existing levee system. So we did receive grant funds for this project, AT grant funds. We received notification on July 27th of our receipt of those funds in 2023. We've since started working on design, and we've received some feedback from the, the property owners. So the residential property owner shown there, as well as the construction business to the west, were invited to the PIT committee meeting on December 12th to give some input on the project. And there were concerns brought forward by the adjacent residential property owner regarding the extra pedestrian traffic next to the property, trespassing onto private property by both people and pets, proximity of the trail to the home, and user safety crossing the highway, as well as drainage issues on the property. So city staff, since that meeting, has tried to take a little bit of time to review some of the things that we weren't aware of, such as drainage. We did verify that the property generally drains to the south away from the levee system. If we were to realign the trail here, we could also take measures to make sure that the trail is pitched towards the river, so the water runoff generated from the trail would go directly towards the river, not the property. We would intend to do that. We've already reached out to Corps of Engineers staff and Lyon County Engineering staff to talk about permitting. We don't see any challenges with permitting or putting the trail in this location. And we would, our intent would be to remain on city levee property, not on private property, and try to address the drainage concerns the best that we can through, through design by making sure the trail drains away and making sure that we're not causing any additional impacts towards the property. So that's where this stands. If the PIT committee members have any further input, I can turn it over at this point.
Thank you, Jason. And one of the other items that came up, if you want to put that, that last slide back up, one of the, there are a couple of conversations. One is the adjoining property owner had a lot of concerns. One of them was about people walking the trail with their animals, and their animals roaming onto private property unleashed, and then people not policing after their animals. Well, excuse me, and I did have a conversation today again with Administrator Hanson and also with Preston Stenzrude from our Public, you know, Parks and Rec. And Preston and his team basically maintain these paths once they're in place, and the animal, people picking up after their pets is a chronic problem on all of our trails and in all our park places. So one message out to the public is that, you know, the city invests a good amount of money in the trails, the Parks Department does a lot of labor and intense attention to keep the parks nice. They make the bags available. There's dump stations for doing that. You know, again, you know, hopefully, we don't have to have a conversation and put additional load on to, to our police and public safety department to try to police people to police their dogs. It's just common sense, and it's good courtesy. So hopefully, people don't force the hand of the city to maybe enforce other conditions or amend the ordinance to make that stiffer. We ask people to be good neighbors. The promise we made to this neighboring property owner, we, we did inform them that our intent was to recommend moving forward on the PI and T committee, but also that our promise was is to, for the city to make every effort to be good neighbors. And part of that is, is to make sure that, that we do what we can to, to have our public take care of the trails and, and care for those also. And then the other part of it is, is the existing trail that's there now that we'll replace, that will probably come, I'm guessing, before us again about what's the future of that property, because I believe we own that, correct? So that was one of the other discussions that PI and T had about that. So at some point in time, the abandonment of that trail will come forward in, in a discussion with the adjoining property owners on what the future of that is also. But that's not for decision tonight, but it's just, I wanted to put that in, too, because that was another point of discussion during that PI and T meeting. And I want to thank Jason again and city staff because we use that as a, it was an additional meeting. We treated it as, as the public hearing time to give people the chance to express their concerns and to take that input. So I want to thank PI and T, too, for investing that time in it. So that's all I have. If anyone else has anything, otherwise, what are the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion has been made and seconded by Jim and C. Any further discussion? We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And that motion passes. Next is Project ST 012-2024, the South Whitney Street Reconstruction Project, which is East College Drive to Gene Avenue. And this would be to consider resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids. Jason?
Thank you. So this is the complete reconstruction of South Whitney Street from East, East College Drive down to Gene Avenue, new water main, new sanitary sewer, new drainage infrastructure, sidewalk, driveways, curb and gutter street, everything being reconstructed. The, the general project area will go back as it is today. The road width will remain 20 feet as it is today. The sidewalk will get one foot wider, as it's proposed, to be one foot wider, six-foot walk instead of five. To, to find that extra width, we are proposing to take one foot off of the median on, on both sides, so the center boulevard space or median space would be two feet narrower than it is today. At their meeting, at the meeting on November 28th, the council adopted the resolution that ordered this improvement in the preparation of the plans. You know, at this point in time, we do have the plans and specifications ready, and we're prepared to advertise for bids. So that's what we're doing here tonight. Our current estimate, including contingency and engineering, puts the total at $2,217,500. All improvements will be assessed according to our current special assessment policy. That breaks down the participation between MMU, the wastewater department, the surface water management utility, general taxes, and property owners. So with that, I can answer any questions if there are any questions, but we would look for your approval to advertise for bids.
Any questions from council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to advertise for bids.
I'll second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by C. Any further discussion? Move to a vote. Close the voting. That motion passes. We'll note the one abstention. Next will, is item 13, consider requests from Enterprise Rent-A-Car to install signage on the airport property. Jason?
Thank you. So as noted in the, the subject here, we, we received a request from Enterprise Rent-A-Car to install a business sign on city airport property at the entrance to the airport from Highway 19. The, the request is just to better identify their, their presence at the airport to the general public. We did bring this request to the Airport Commission on January 2nd at their regular meeting, and we did discuss this request. You can see in the packet, there's just a very quick and rough rendering that was submitted to us by Enterprise for what they're kind of generally thinking, a monument-style sign with some sort of lighting. The request came in as, as big of sign as they could, they could have, but they've since let me know that they're open to discussing the size of the sign. It's not a, not a mandatory that it be a certain size. But the Airport Commission unanimously voted to deny any signage to be placed on the property. The reasoning from the Airport Commission was that the airport has a certain design aesthetic out there, and this sign would detract from that. It's already got very intentional signage, and it all matches a certain design style and color and type, and the site is very well kind of managed that way. So there was that fear, and then there was also the worry that allowing one business at the airport to install their own sign by the frontage opens the door for other businesses at the airport to install signage as well, and then it becomes more of an unmanaged presence. So that was the recommendation from the Airport Commission. So we thought we would bring this to council for kind of final weigh-in. We have two recommendations. One is to deny the request as recommended by Airport Commission. The other is to authorize staff to work with Enterprise Rent-A-Car a little more towards some sort of installation that fits our, our standard. So with that, I'll turn it over for discussion.
Thank you, Jason. One other conversation, that kind of a side conversation, I don't know that it's something that the city would drive, but it was out of respect to Enterprise, the Airport Commission members discussed also one of the highway informational signs that show business or destination, and that perhaps it would be appropriate for Enterprise to approach MinDOT and request to have something of that nature. Jason?
I do have an update on that front as well. Last, last week on Friday, and again this morning, I had some conversations with MinDOT Traffic Office. That is not an option. It does not meet MinDOT signing standards, as we're kind of familiar with that conversation with MinDOT, but that's, that's what we've heard again.
That's good to know.
Mr. President, Pro Tem?
Yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's right. And I know this isn't in the picture, but there is wayward signage as soon as you get in that states enterprise car rental, correct?
Yes, as soon as you turn on to airport property, you can kind of see it in the top photo, the maroon to the right of the enterprise sign there. That's a wayfinding sign, and it does say enterprise with an arrow to kind of direct you to keep traveling up the way, and there's some other directions on there as well. Yep.
And, yeah, I'll, I won't take us down the, the specific conversations that the Airport Commission had, but.
Well, and the one thing I'd comment on is, first, we're fortunate as a city this size to have a car rental in town. So I would like us, my, and I'm gonna make a motion here shortly, but I would like us to work with them to find some signage, because it'd be detrimental to lose them. I mean, most communities with 13,000 people do not have an enterprise car rental. So with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion that the council authorize staff to work with Enterprise to find a solution that fits the needs of both.
I can second that.
Okay, a motion by Jim, seconded by Steve, to have city staff work with Enterprise to come up with a solution for signage. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. So are you, are we rejecting this specific sign then, right?
What their sign is presented, yes, I want the staff to work with Enterprise to come up with.
I just want to be clear in that.
Because I do want to make sure that we keep them in town, too.
Are there other signs at the airport, like on the building or, I mean, even though there's?
Not for, not for enterprise that I can think of on the arrival-departure building, no. Some of the other hangars do have some signage on them, though.
And they do have signage, once you're inside the arrival building, that discusses enterprise, and there's a number of signs in the parking lot that delineate where the enterprise vehicle parking only is.
That's correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And just for a point of clarification on the motion, if I may, as well, maybe city staff would work with Airport Commission to kind of help guide that council?
I, that's, yes.
Any further discussion? Move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Redwood River One Watershed One Plan Memorandum of Agreement. And Jason, are you taking this? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Included in the packet, you've got the memorandum of agreement for the Redwood River One Watershed One Plan Program. The purpose of the program is to develop comprehensive watershed management plan that aligns multiple local planning efforts into one watershed-wide planning effort that crosses county and municipal boundaries. You can see the watershed there depicted on that map that I've included in the packet. The Redwood Cottonwood Rivers Control Area received a planning grant for this watershed, so they've reached out to all local government partners within the watershed to determine if anyone wanted to be a participant. So we've since, as city staff, responded that the city marshal would like to participate. So that's why we're here tonight, to discuss it with the council. So to participate in the One Watershed One Plan, the city marshal must assign an elected official to serve as a delegate on the policy committee, and the city must sign the agreement that's in the packet. The agreement just kind of outlines how the, the plan works and different roles that everyone plays. The agreement was reviewed by the city attorney as well as city staff, and city staff would recommend that we, we sign the agreement and we select our delegate. If we're not ready to select a delegate tonight, we don't have to, but we will need to do that within the coming week or two.
Mr. President, Pro Tem?
Ma'am.
We did have some correspondence with the mayor on this topic as well. He has interest in being a, a delegate to the, to this. He did not mention anything about an alternate, so I just wanted to express that on his behalf tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? What are the council's wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by C to approve. Any further discussion? We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Item 15, the introduction of an ordinance amending interim cannabis prohibition.
We do have our city attorney, Mr. Pro Tem, on Zoom, and she is going to present this particular item.
City Attorney Pam Whitmore. Hi, Pam.
Good evening, President Pro Tem and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So in front of you, you have ordinance 24-002, which is an amendment to the interim ordinance that had prohibited commercial sale, test, reselling, manufacturing, cultivating of both higher and level, lower cannabis products. And so just to give you a broad overview, as you may recall, we got here because there was opportunities in the city that were related to the limited manufacturing, for lack of a better word, of some low hemp-derived beverages whipped by your brewery in town, and that the staff was directed to look into that, really, after doing some studies and some analysis, the, the public health, welfare, and safety factors that are the big concern with the unregulated sale and manufacturing distribution right now of all these types of products without having input from the Office of Cannabis Management yet, prove to not be concerning in this instance. This isn't being distributed throughout the city, exposing the youth in the community to additional products, and does not cause the, the smell and noise concerns of some other of these manufacturing kind of facilities that haven't been determined yet by the Office of Cannabis Management. So what you have in front of you is an amendment to allow the limited manufacture of these lower potency hemp beverages, specifically beverages. So you'll notice it states edibles to begin, to begin with, but says intended to be consumed as a beverage. That's the, that mirrors the language of the statute, so to speak. And it's, that limited manufacturing would be as an accessory use, defined as 50% or less of the production of the total product that's being produced at these breweries and distilleries, and they also have to be licensed as a brewery and distillery. distilleries, and they also have to be licensed as a brewery and distillery under the state statutes. There was also, again, the clarification that this can be sold at the municipal liquor store who has the experience with making sure there's enforcement and carding and all of that. And then also C, and that is expansion, to allow those establishments that have current on-sale liquor licenses to allow the onsite consumption of these lower potency hemp beverages as well. And I would say that as a request, based on whatever the council decides in its consideration, if there's a motion with respect to this, that that motion include an amendment to see to say onsite sale and consumption, since I think that that's what the intent is, is that, you know, those, those establishments that are licensed as on-sale liquor licenses can have the sale and consumption onsite of those lower potency hemp beverages. With, other than that, there's an additional clause that's at the end that I also would ask if the council considers this, that there, I recommend an amendment to number two, number three. As you can see in all the, the changes of the underlining, there was a piece that was intention, intended to be, to be stricken out that wasn't, that starts after the period, after the word above, and was starting with the word proposing. So that was intended to be a strikeout, to go, proposing to engage in the sale of any cannabinoid products was intended to be a strikeout. So other than that, that's my overview of the, the proposed amendments, and I'm open for questions.
Anyone on the council have questions for Pam? Administrator Hanson?
Mr. President Pro Tem. Pam did put this in the memo as well. The LNO Committee did talk a little bit about registration fees. We sometimes get questions at the city about why do we license? Why do we charge fees? And we wanted to be clear for this new licensing of on-sale consumption, for those that have an on-sale liquor license, that in 2024, we wouldn't establish a registration, but that would be something we want to have in 2025. If you look at the cannabis law, it talks about compliance checks. And the requirement by the local unit of government, and it's not may, there's shall, the word shall, conduct compliance checks, and, and that's noted in several locations in the law. So there is a burden on local governments, and we wanted to advocate that to the committee. I think there was consensus to work towards that, but wait until 2025 and not initiate in 2024. So I just wanted to add that to the presentation by Pam.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. I would add on to that, those comments as, along with that, there was conversation to really look at a registration process that would involve just more than this quick situation that we're addressing here, so.
What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Is that what Pam's additions that she talked about?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by C, seconded by Jim, to recommend approval of the cannabis ordinance with the inclusions that the council rep, or counselor Whitmore had suggested. Stephen, have you got all those?
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. Why don't you zoom me up as my agenda went off print here? Here we go. So the next item on the agenda is consider the approval of a joint powers agreement, the renewal with the Marshall Public Schools.
President Pro Tem, I'm just gonna cover this topic. This is an annual agreement between the City of Marshall and Marshall Public Schools. The intent is to really cover mostly the community education partnership we have with the school district. We have been in partnership with them for many years. I think I have the original agreement on my desk. Can't remember the original starting date, but decades. It also includes language regarding shared use facilities between recreation and the school district. We do receive funds in return from the school district through their levy and aid process through the Department of Education. On average, it's about $84,000 annually to operate the community ed program for the school district and the community. And there are no fees charged to the city for recreational usage by, by our programs. I will note as well, the school district and the city do meet on a regular basis, and we currently have it scheduled for once a month, just to kind of talk about different things that come up between community ed and recreation. So it's been a really good partnership for the city and the school district for many years, and so we're happy to present this to the council for adoption. I will note, the last time that the council adopted this was in September of 2022, so we're a little bit behind. We've kind of missed that window. It has typically been renewed at the beginning of the school year. It was a suggestion by the school district to really just put the, in the annual start date as January 1st. And so you'll see this come back around likely in December of this year to prepare for that January 1st start date. The school district did approve this agreement at their first school board meeting this year, and staff are recommending the approval of this agreement as well to council.
Thank you, Sharon. I think one other thing that's really important that includes with this is, is the city's participation in their kind of skills and trades. I mean, I don't know that we're, we're not an active participant, we're, but we're certainly a promoter.
Right.
Of that program. And I think that maintaining this agreement helps strengthen that and shows our, our buy into that, too, because I think that's crucial for our business and industries as they try to, to develop and maintain and increase their workforce and, and a skilled workforce. So I'm really glad that we continue to do this. And I know that Preston, your group is probably the strongest involved, and it certainly looks like it, it works well for all the parties. So I think it's a really good agreement.
I, I think that Career Technical Training Center could be an opportunity for community education classes as well, as Jasmine gets a little more experience and time and kind of reaching out. We know we've had some requests for trade, working with your hands type classes through community ed from our senior population in Marshall. So I think, as you noted in the memo, this was an added facility in the agreement, and it'll, it'll lend well to future programming.
Well, and it makes sense as we build out merit and do all those other things. Those things can all work hand in hand. And I think as you, as you strengthen and support one, the others all grow too. So I mean, I just think this is a really strong community partnership that we need to continue to support and, and to help it, to help it continue to grow. So any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement.
Okay. Motion by Amanda, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. We'll note the abstention. So the next up is commission, board, and liaison reports, and none of mine have met since the last meeting. Steve?
Mine, we did have an E D A meeting. We, I can't remember, and I didn't get it. So I'll defer to her much better than notes.
Oh, no, I don't know. I don't have a lot of notes, but a couple of things to mention. Solugen, it's been talked about, that there will be a ceremonial groundbreaking in March or April, so we have that to look forward to. And what else do we want to chat about?
Hotel.
The whole, well, yeah, the hotel tax payment, public hearing was canceled. We know that, and I think that whole project's been put on hold. We were notified of that as well. Continuing to work with tapestry companies, too, on that housing project that we talked about last year, affordable housing and senior housing, I believe, they're going back out for grants as well. So that's exciting.
Thank you. John?
Nothing.
C?
Yes, the C V B met, and one of the big topics we talked about was making changes to our account as one of the checks that we had written out to the, the entertainment organization that helped us with Prairie Jam was intercepted and the check was stolen. And so because of that, we're trying to figure out a way so that our money doesn't get stolen in the future. And then the S R D C, I had missed because of schedule conflict, and then I will also not be renewing my term for the next two years. So that's all.
Okay. Jim?
I have nothing.
Council member individual items. Jim, you again.
I have nothing.
Okay. C?
Just letting everybody know that It Begins With Us is our annual conference. It will be February 12th and February 13th. February 13th, a Monday, will be a poverty simulation. So if you have never done one before, I really suggest you all sign up for it. It is amazing. It will really give you perspective into some of the, the lives that our neighbors here live through every day. And, and then on Tuesday is the conference, and that will be from eight thirty until four, and we have some really amazing presentations. So I hope you all sign up. There are scholarships available, so if you want to sign up for that. And then it is over at S M S U Upper Conference Room, and John's helping me get it all ready to go, so.
John?
Nothing.
I have nothing?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Next, staff reports. Administrator Hanson?
Just one brief note, the Aquatic Center Committee, which was just formed at the last council meeting, we're gonna have a kickoff design meeting this Friday, and all the council members that are on the committee can attend, so I'm really excited about that and look forward to getting that project a little further along. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Jason, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I finally introduced you as that at the end of the meeting, so it's all you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think a big update that we have is that we did open bids today for the S R E building at 2:00 PM. So that was really good, a lot of nervous energy going into that one, but we had five bids, which was excellent. And the apparent low bid at this point is from Susner Construction, little over $2.8 million, which is great. It's below estimate. We'll review paperwork and run numbers with TKDA, look at cost participation stuff, and hopefully come on February 13th back to the council with a strong recommendation and something we can all support. So we're really excited to see those numbers come in. All good bids. Everybody was clearly bidding the same project. So it's a testament to TKDA's efforts, too. They really went back, worked very hard to trim some fat out of the project, make it simpler, make it easier to digest, and then worked really hard to get bidders. So don't want to spray any confetti yet because we've got a lot of work to do, and we gotta work through this with the council yet, but just really happy with TKDA's work on that, and then also Ron Helgerson's help in trying to generate interest. On February 7th, the FAA will be in our community to hold some Capitol meetings. We'll go over our C I P, as well as a few other airports. We'll host out of our airport conference room for those meetings as well. So that'll be good. Looking forward to having them in the community. One other just minor piece, if you see a, like a post being installed on the, in MinDOT right away by the Horseshoe Pond by 19 and 23, MinDOT is doing that. They're putting up a permanent traffic counter at that location. They had some statewide funding, and that was one of the locations that was selected. So if you have any questions about what that is, now you, now you know what that is. That's all I've got.
Good. Thank you. City Attorney Pam Whitmore?
Nothing for the good of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. So the rest of the items are information only, the cash and investments, public housing minutes, and agenda, list of building permits and upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Jim makes the motion to adjourn, seconded by C. Is there any discussion? We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And we are adjourned. Thank you for your tolerance and patience.